All right. Thank you for your patience. If we could, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to rise for the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to ask Selectman McArdle to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, where liberty, justice, and liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have an immediate order of business to take up. All right. Former First Selectman Sherri Stenick is here to join us, and she has two new pets of the month. This is something that's done since Sherri left the board, and we've been doing it for about the last four years, once a month.
Okay, we have a little over closed kittens and cats at the shelter. This one's Jessica, and Jessica has another friend in her in the carrying case there. There are 15 cats available right now, so if anybody is looking for them, they're a little playmate. Looks very sweet. Stop by 211, it's 211 Monroe Highway. Animal Control, thank you.
All right. And this is the post-Halloween sale of black cats?
That's it. It's a great bargain.
All right, Sherri, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've also had an opportunity to get rid of a number of dogs and pets from our shelter, and we do this once a month, and kind of share it with the folks.
Sounds good.
I do want to quickly acknowledge and welcome to their first Board of Selectmen meeting, Selectmen Timniak and Selectman McArdle. So, thank you very much for joining our board here, and look forward to some very productive talks and discussions. Let's do, next up is the minutes to consider and act upon, the minutes from a regular meeting of November 4th, 2015. If I have a motion to accept?
A motion to accept.
And a second?
Oh, a second, yeah.
All right. I think since I was the only one at this, I'm okay with the minutes, so are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor? That's one. All opposed? Any abstentions?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. We have a number of administrative items on the agenda, and we have a couple of what I'll call more substantive items, and I believe a whole large part of the crowd is here for the solar panel discussion. So I would, it was suggested that we move that up to address most of the folks here. Could I have a motion to take the solar panel item, which is item number?
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Yeah, fourteen.
Item number fourteen, out of sequence, and take that next.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Of the, to take it up?
Take it out of sequence.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passed unanimously. So now, that item is to hear, consider, and act upon. The following resolution is recommended by the Director of Public Works, resolved that a solar panel and, or that a solar power and services agreement between the town Fairfield and Green Skies for the purposes of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system over the westbound parking lot of Fairfield Center Railroad Station for the sole benefit of Tomlinson Middle School located at 200 Uncle Road, the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
All right, and a second? Thank you. That item is now before us for discussion. Any comments from the board?
I'd like to make a couple of comments on this.
Sure do.
When I've looked into this, since being sworn, I've spent, I would say, you know, upwards of 15 hours or so making telephone calls, following up, talking to the principals who are at stake in this project, and I'm left with the conclusion that I have, I have big concerns for this project moving forward, and the benefit to the town makes me nervous about approving this today. I think the best solution would be to look for other avenues around Tomlinson to put up these solar panels. I understand the Z-Rac program fairly well from the state of Connecticut, and I don't want to lose the Z-Rac opportunity. The town has been awarded. By doing that, I think we're actually not doing the town the best service. So, I'd like to see us explore another option, to move the panels away from the train station onto the Tomlinson property, whether it be roofs, whether it be the examination of doing a carport at Tomlinson, but I think the best interest in the town right now is not to put the solar panels at the train station. The benefits don't seem to outweigh one opportunity cost. 20 years tying up the parking lot takes away any option we have, whether we want to do a parking garage there. Parking is one of the major issues the town faces. It's something which is on the Chamber of Commerce's, you know, top list of one of their concerns. I've talked to business owners who have concerns over employee parking, and we have, we have a lot of things which have changed in town since it was last looked at, and namely, the Fairfield Theater Company is now selling 500 tickets a night, which takes up a lot of spots. We have more employers downtown than we did two, 20 years ago, such as Plan B Burger, Be Fresh, the Theater Company. I think that the town needs to seriously examine the opportunity to put in a parking garage there. I think it's something, as the town expands with larger schools, or more schools, because we have more students, we also have more commuters. So, I would really like to see us not lose the opportunity to take advantage of the Z-Rac, but look to move the Z-Rac from what we're talking about right now at the train station, and look to move it to Tomlinson, and work with the Board of Education in seeing if we could find a way, and I totally understand that we're not going to be able to do the same system size, but the cost benefit analysis may not be far off from what we're getting at the train station. The way I understand it, the steel infrastructure, which we'll be putting in at the train station, will basically diminish the return on investment we get. So, if we were to do a rooftop system at Tomlinson, or we were to look to do other options at Tomlinson, we could essentially do half the size and still receive the same benefit. Now, don't quote me on half the size, but I do want to say upwards of, you know, 60% or so could be there in the long run. So, that's my, my position on it right now. That's what my research has gotten me, and that's the way I think I'll be voting down.
Selectman McArdle, you have any thoughts?
So, yeah, a few thoughts. Obviously, had a lot of input, phone calls and emails, and I think that, you know, moving to use renewable energy makes a lot of sense, and when we can save money for the town, it makes a lot of sense. But I think one of the big things that we really need to focus on is, is more of long-term planning, and to tie something up for 20 years with the technology that may or may not, you know, I just think in 20 years, the way solar works is going to be a lot different than the way it works today, so we need to really think that through, and, and make it part of a long-term plan townwide, where we can bring in, you know, the, the solar and other renewable options. And the other really big thing that kept coming up is, is the parking issues downtown. My daughters have worked downtown, and, you know, they would have to try to leave their job run out to try to move their cars. Somebody else isn't there, you can't run out and move your car. So I think that this, again, too, is just something that's becoming a bigger problem in town, and I think that we need to tie it together. We can't, like, take parking away, or limit, limit options at parking without really considering it, and maybe tying the whole thing together into a long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir.
Couple thoughts, or, or, could I ask you to just address the points on, on if we don't do something on this Z-Rac, can it be transferred to someplace else?
It can't be transferred, because it's the same meter.
Okay.
That, that's the key to it. And even the timeline, it could be quicker, because at Tomlinson, you wouldn't be going through a time plan and zoning for a change, because it's on the same site.
Okay, but we would go through some other boards at that point, right?
We'd still go through the Board of Selectmen, as a power purchase agreement, right?
Okay. Would it have to go to zoning in that case?
No.
All right. It would probably have to be approved by the Board of Eds?
Board of Education, right.
If there were some, if, if an alternative use was using some of the Board of Ed property, they would have to approve that?
Yes, of course.
And coordinate the timing with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen, really.
Any other thoughts in terms of relative size of the systems, or anything else that, I realize you haven't done any planning on this, you haven't thought about it, you haven't explored any of the options, you'd probably still have to talk to the installer to see if something like that would be?
These guys is here, we've talked today, he's perfectly willing to consider that option to go to Tomlinson. So, he's willing to take a look at that with the Board of Ed, with Sal, and come back to everyone with a proposal, or not a proposal, depending on how it would work, but anyway, take a look at that option to try and save the Z-Rac program.
Okay. Any, any guidance as to how long, what the timing is on that, how long that would take to come back with something?
Two to three weeks.
So, it's two to three weeks, so.
Okay.
The next Board of Selectmen meeting would be the following one, or next Board of Ed meeting, so.
Well, something in January, perhaps.
Probably, yeah, not Christmas, right?
Because we'd probably have to talk to, certainly, the Board of Ed Superintendent's office and get appropriate?
Exactly.
Approval or authorization from them. Okay. That's a little bit off topic from the, the fact the exact resolution before us, but also more to the point in terms of the project.
Right.
And, you know, from my personal standpoint, you know, the concerns on this project have a lot to do with the, the process in terms of how it got here, specifically that?
Can you speak up, please?
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I'll use my coaching voice. My concern on, on some of this has been the amount of information, amount of questions, and, and I think all three members of the board have seen a lot of emails going back and forth with a lot of questions and a lot of information. There are a lot of people that are getting, getting informed about this, or becoming aware of this late in the game. So while some of the questions have been answered multiple times already, that doesn't mean everybody's heard those answers. While some of the questions coming forward are new, we want to be able to get those out to everybody, and I know that as we look at that, the town has a strong commitment to alternative and sustainable sources of energy. The town currently saves over $2.5 million every year by using alternative sources of energy. I think Ed, it's almost half of that, one point, over $1 million due to solar panels and, and solar energy alone. So, we have a lot of solar panels up around town, we have a commitment to doing more of that. This site, as was pointed out, is a little bit different than just putting it on a rooftop somewhere, where you're not changing the function and you're not eliminating any possibilities. If you have a roof on a building, chances are you're going to need that roof for the life of the building. In this case, there have been a number of questions coming up with respect to the parking lot, what could be done with it, would the solar panels eliminate some of those options before we'd have time to not think through the solar panels, but not think through the, not having time to think through possibly the other options that might be, from an overall town perspective, more worthwhile in time. So I think the idea of, of not losing the Z-Rac is good, and I, I thank you for suggesting an alternative that allows us to keep the Z-Rac. I think that continuing to look for alternatives, for alternative fuel, electric costs are not going down anytime, or at least not projected to go down anytime soon. So the more we can offload our power from the grid, so to speak, to solar panels and to alternative sources of energy, I think is, is phenomenal in the long run, because every dollar we save, we save every year going forward. It's not a one-time cost savings in doing that. Since that was just on the table, given this is the resolution before us, it seems that what we'd have to do is actually vote this down. All right, I don't think postponing it does what we want.
Right, we want to change it.
And only other option?
Right.
Well, actually replace it.
Right.
I think based on what comes back, because we don't, we don't know enough now to suggest what might come back in what storm, even though you did lay out a number of options.
Right.
But I think we need Mr. Bowman to come back to us. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, can I make the motion to do that, or Julie, are we voting up or down on this? Which am I doing, or am I asking Ed a question?
You can do any one of those three that you choose.
All right. Ed, a quick question. The size of the solar array we're going to put at the train station was one megawatt, right?
Yes.
All right. What would be comparable, what would we have to get to achieve the same savings, roughly, ballpark figure, on rooftops?
It'd be the same, you'd have to get the same number of panels, get the same number saved. If it wasn't a thousand pan, I don't know what the number was.
He's asking dollars, not kilowatts.
Yeah, dollars.
Oh, in dollars?
Right. Oh, in dollars.
Same size. With the same size, I mean, it's a dollar per kilowatt hour savings, so. But however, you're right, though, so you have to, it's on a rooftop, it could be cheaper therefore, you get more. But until we take a look at that, it's hard to tell how that would be. I mean, I'd say, we have some rooftop units that are as low as seven cents a kilowatt hour compared to 11.9 cents here, so it's possible. If it's on a carport on the back, it won't be as expensive, it won't have to be solid steel, we didn't know where they're that big. So it's a whole bunch of options you have to look at, as well as whether the roofs can accept it or 20-year lifespan. But anything we propose in terms of cost would be, the cost per kilowatt hour would be less than, than we'd pay with this project.
Right. My other question, or just I want to confirm, that it's got to be above 250 kilowatt system to qualify for the Z-Rac.
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Because it's a large system, you have to have 250 or better, right?
All right. So any system we find above 250, which we can put at Tomlinson, would be achieving, not the entire goal, and maybe not the entire savings, but it would be actually moving the ball forward and achieving some substantial savings?
Correct.
Against the town.
Any further comments? Right now, this is the item on the agenda, we could go to, we're done with comments, we can go to the public and let them. All right. Wow. How many folks would like to say a few words? Okay, that's good. I see about four hands going up. Just guidelines? What this is, is an opportunity for public comment. I'm going to ask you to keep the comment, the two minutes or less, and then I will just ask, who would like to go first? Ms. Beal?
Hi, Michael.
Please, come to the mic, come to the podium. Please give us your name and your address, please.
Martha Beal, 88 Robertson Crossing, Fairfield, and I'm not near the train station, I'm way, way up. So this isn't one of those not in your backyard things, because it literally is not in my backyard. Two concerns, one's the aesthetics, but I'm, hear more, more about the concern of safety. When you're building carports and canopies, and there's people walking underneath and cars going in and out, my concern really is the canopies and the safety of people and property. I, like Chris, spent a long time looking at a lot of different information, and probably the most important piece of information I came up with was Risk Management Series, Snow Load Safety Guide from FEMA. So I bothered to make a copy of it for you three, and perhaps you can share, but it's instrumental as far as guiding you in the future, as far as having people and cars parked under canopies. And I think this is the most important part, and it says, Building Code Provisions, I have to put in my glasses for this one. Building Code Provisions for Designed Snow Loads Incorporate Light Rain on Snow, but Heavy Rainfall Is Not Included. This is FEMA. So Factors Influencing Rain on Snow Load Include Rain Intensity, Roof Geometry, and Drainage Characteristics of the Roof. So in other words, we don't have codes that really address those issues, and if you have snow like last year, you could have failure. So, I am passing that over to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Please. Again, just come up to the podium, give us your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Claire Brhenny, I live in, do you want my full address? 827 Riverside Drive here in Fairfield. I live relatively close to the train station. I'm sorry, I'll speak louder. I'm the CEO and founder of Objective 350. We're a small group in Fairfield that is dedicated to teaching kids around my age on the impacts of climate change. I understand that there are economic ramifications to this project that maybe don't work for this town right now, but I'd like to stress the importance of solar energy and our use of it. Solar power is tried and true, we understand how it works, and it is extremely efficient. The amount of carbon dioxide currently in our atmosphere is dangerous. It's relatively small, about 400 millionth of a percent of our atmosphere is made up of carbon dioxide, and that is still too much. Fairfield has an opportunity to set a precedent that we are unwilling to condone this kind of abuse to our atmosphere. I think it's extremely important that you strongly consider solar power, and this project especially. It speaks to the pride that we have in our town, and our willingness to protect the very fragile ecosystem. I understand that not everyone believes in climate change, but I'm here to say that it is real, and it is man-made, and it is extremely serious. I fully support this project, understand that maybe you can't, but I have to beg you to consider solar energy in the future, and more green initiative. It's extremely important to our town and our world. This effort begins with small steps from towns like ours. There are nations currently working with huge, massive projects in solar energy. We're not there yet, the United States isn't there yet. It will take small towns like Fairfield, setting a precedent and standing against climate change for, and that to happen at all. I, again, I have to strongly encourage the use of solar energy. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can you please ask her to spell her last name?
Oh, could you?
Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, don't worry, that's a big problem usually. B U R H E N N E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would just point out that Fairfield has a long history with solar power, that, Mr. Bowman, this is one of 30?
Well, it's 20 that are approved and ready to go, but there's 10 more in line.
Okay, so that's 20 solar panel projects approved and ready to go, and those are not kind of the ones already installed?
Kind of installed and ready to install, yeah.
And 10 others that are on the drawing board.
That's correct.
We're saving over $1 million a year in solar power. Fairfield is in fact one of the leaders in the entire state of Connecticut, I suspect in the country, but I'll, right now I'll settle for Connecticut, in the use of both solar power and alternative sources. So, as much as we are discussing this project, as to whether this project gets approved, solar power is not the question, it's been something the town has long been a supporter of. Is there another person who'd like to comment? Please, sir, come up to the mic and give us your name and your address, please.
My name's Jim Motivalli, I'm a member of the Clean Energy Task Force, I live on Brooklyn Terrace, here in Fairfield. I have to say, I'm disappointed with the way the town is handling this matter. I don't think you're seriously considering this project, and I think it would be in line with what the town says it wants to do, which is to save money for the taxpayers. We're looking at a $2 million savings over the life of the project, and it's hard to see how any one other project could achieve that kind of savings. So, I wish, I wish I could be confident that the project was being seriously considered. I also think a lot of people use euphemisms for the way they talk about projects like this. The real objection to this project is what they call viewshed objections. People don't want to look at these solar carports. It's hard to see that what they're looking at now is actually better, since they're looking at a parking lot. Now we're looking at a parking lot with solar carports on it, doesn't seem all that different, but the main objection here is people don't want to look at it. If you look at what has killed a lot of very valuable clean energy projects around the country, is that same kind of objection. And I would use as the central argument in favor of that, the Cape Wind project in Cape Cod. Cape Cod is currently powered by a coal plant. The majority of power that comes there is from coal. A 130 turbine wind project was proposed for Cape Cod, which would give them 100% clean power. Now, some powerful interests on the Cape didn't want to look at wind towers, and the result was something like 15 years of people fighting against, and putting a lot of money into the effort to fight these wind towers. The result is the project hasn't been built, and this would be the first offshore wind project in the United States, and has effectively been stopped by people who don't want to look at it. And the result is that Cape Cod today is powered by coal power. If you look down in the south, where we have mountaintop removal mining, you'll see people saying, no, we can't put wind towers there, because we don't want to look at them. The alternative to that is taking the tops off the mines and causing unimaginable environmental destruction. So again, we have mountaintop removal mining instead of wind towers, and I think that's generally what we've seen. When people don't want to look at clean energy projects, they end up with a worse alternative. I think we've seen that around the country. I write reports about environmental issues, including energy, quite a bit, and there's really no way to have some form of energy that you don't have to look at, that produces 100% clean power, and is just the perfect solution for everything. We don't really have that. We have a series of alternatives that all have negatives associated with them. And yes, you would have to look at this project, you would see these solar carports. They also serve the purpose of keeping snow and ice and rain off our cars, and they have the purpose of providing one megawatt of solar power, and saving the town an estimated $2 million over the 20-year life of the project. So, it's hard to see how the town, it's hard to see a downside for this, but I'm afraid the town's going to basically accede to the views of a few people who don't want to look at this, and the project will be killed. And I find that disappointing. So I'll stop there.
Thank you for your comments. Somebody else want to offer? Mr. Elwery?
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. I was actually a member of the Clean Energy Task Force when it first started, and I've always been for solar power and any kind of renewable energy, properly placed, though. In fact, at one point, we were talking about trying to get a wind turbine down at the dump, which brings me to the thought that, and Ed would be able to tell you this for sure, the whole purpose of this, as I understand it, is we make the, the meter go the other way. Is that right?
Mr. Elwery, I'm going to ask you to make your comments, but it's not a Q and A session.
Got it. I should know that, right?
As a former member of this board?
Yes, yes. So, my point is, it's where you place it. I understand about people being concerned about climate change and whatnot. We have a pretty large area down at the dump, we have other places in town. To me, one big stovestorm, we have a huge problem down at the train station. I just think it's something that has to be thought about pretty heavily, and I think Chris and Laurie both bring up a great point about alternatives and locking ourselves into this. There's also solar panels that are coming out now, that are much more efficient than ones that we're using now. So, there's a lot of things that are happening there, and I don't think it's something to rush into, and I have to say I concur with the, your fellow selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaylee?
Hi, Lawrence Kaylee, I'm also on the Clean Energy Task Force.
Your address, too, please?
1162 Jennings 1162 Jennings Road. And I have been a member, had been a member, of the RTM and have worked on the 20% by 2010 resolution, which called for the town to reduce its energy use by 20% by 2010. We succeeded. And part of this resolution called for this effort to be ongoing past 2010. Now, one thing that's important to understand is, yes, this had to do with energy, but why, why do we need to save energy other than global warming? Well, there happens to be another reason that is very pressing. What I had discovered years ago was that asthma rates in Fairfield, Fairfield County, the Northeast, have gone up. When you talk to school nurses who have been working for quite a while, when they started working, they do not recall treating asthma. Asthma rates, heart disease, cardiovascular problems, et cetera. All these issues are really another important aspect of why we need to support renewable energy, clean renewable energy, and we need to do as much as possible. It is cumulative. Every solar panel we add, every, every windmill, every electric car is going to contribute to giving us a cleaner, healthier environment, and there are costs to not doing that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Mary? Oh, I think I've got two Marys there. Mary number one and Mary Kay number two.
They break behind each other now.
Yes. Sorry, sorry about that.
I'm Mary Hoag, 165 Stonewall Lane. I first really would love to applaud Claire Bernheim. I met Claire at a presentation, and I think it's very brave to get up and speak in front of this crowd, and I thought she spoke very eloquently. The group she talks about is from both high schools, and they're a really interested, informed group. It's really exciting to see our kids getting involved, so I just wanted to echo her thoughts about climate change. I think we're having a big worldwide talk about climate change in Paris. I think it's a really exciting time to be having this discussion in Fairfield. I would hope that we would be voting yes for this project. As Larry pointed out, it doesn't matter if it's one project here and there. We need to do a lot, a lot. This project was a big project, but it's still not enough to get where we need to go. So, we really need to take this very seriously in terms of how much we have to do. A few solar panels on a few roofs, the roofs are not big enough and not strong enough to take as much as we need. So, I really, really encourage you to think very heavily and favorably towards more solar panel. I know we have a lot, and I appreciate how much we do in town. I know we've done a lot of reaching out to the residents. They've got a lot of solar on our personal homes. I think it's very exciting, but where there's so much more that's needed, and I hope we'll get your leadership to move Fairfield forward towards solar. Thank you.
Mary Kay Frost, Chair of the Parking Authority of Fairfield. I just want to thank all of you for your patience with the Board of Parking Authority through this whole process, Ed and Stan and your office and the work that Chris and Lori have done. I know we've been difficult. We had our 38 questions, followed by our 15 conditions, with answers from Green Skies, and then we questioned Green Skies, and it went back and forth. We had black, blue, green, and red answers back and forth, and I'm sure you must have just, you know, thought we were kind of nutty. But we had the fiduciary duty to do what we did, to ask questions, to make sure that there was no financial or legal risk to the Parking Authority, and that our commuters were protected, and we just want to say, I want to say for the Board, thank you so much for how you, how you treated us during the process and for your final, the thought that you put into your final decision.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to talk?
Scott Thompson, 25 Hunter Road, and Chairman of the Clean Energy Task Force. Have to say, I had an entirely different set of remarks planned for earlier. I thought we were going to have a chance to debate the project, so I'm disappointed in that. But on the bright side, I do appreciate the thoughtfulness to try to salvage the Z rec. I think that is a very clever idea, and I would like to commend Mr. Timniak for that. And I do appreciate the, the town's support, and Ed Bowman's support on going with clean energy over the last several years. Twenty projects in the queue, or I should say, on the books, ten more in the queue. It is a very impressive thing that we're doing here in Fairfield. That said, there is a lot more to do, and I'm just here to, to plead for your support over the coming years as we, as we keep digging into this issue and trying to put more renewables in Fairfield, save the taxpayers' money, and secure our energy dollar and our energy future. And one of the things I'll ask for your help with over the coming years is, is on the residential side. We're doing great on the, on the, on the public side with the town buildings, but we have about 16,000 homes in Fairfield. And we just went through an exercise where we used Ward High School interns to evaluate every rooftop in Fairfield, and they concluded there were about 5,000 rooftops that were potentially viable for solar. So, about a third of all the rooftops in this community are viable for solar. That represents an enormous potential savings to our taxpayers. To date, we have about 275 of our residents that have taken the step and have begun to benefit from solar, but that is really just a drop in the bucket of where we could be. So, in the coming years, coming months, coming years, I'll be here to ask for your support when we do outreach, to try to encourage people about the benefits of solar and going solar, both economic and, of course, as you've heard, all the environmental benefits from other members of my task force. So, thank you.
Scott, and I think just to clarify, you kind of helped lead the charge to get most of those 275 folks on solar with the two different residential solar initiatives we had over the last two years, three years?
Yeah, about the last three years, right.
All right, so you've been very involved in doing that, and that's 270 folks, and that's really come in the last two or three years. So, as much as that's not a big number out of 16,000 or 5,000 where we're trying to get to, that's a lot for the first two years, getting that project off the ground, and we owe you a debt of thanks in terms of helping spearhead that.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the public want to say a few words?
My name is Lisa Rowland, President Mosswood Condominiums. I'm at 245 Uncle Bell Road, Unit 133. I want to thank you for listening to the Mosswood community. I want to thank everybody here for the presentation, for taking the time to listen to us. Mosswood's not against green energy, you know, we're for it. It seems that where this project was located, it might, just was not, in our opinion, a good fit. Sometimes when you want to do the right thing, you don't realize, you get, you start thinking about it, don't realize that maybe this just is not the right place. This is a place that has a lot of activity, a lot of people, there's a lot of liability. The carports, if they do, from what I've read from some of the information, that they, they do leak, they are not necessarily, they're not considered a canopy, the water does come down. You've got, I don't know how many people commute every day, but you've got all these people going in and out, and I think the best thing for this project, I'm not saying it should go away, is to put it somewhere else, somewhere that is not as, as busy. But from Mosswood, I want to thank you all, and again, thanks for listening.
Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, it's been to the Board, any further comments from the Board? Are we ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Ready?
Yep.
All right. Okay, just a yes vote means the project is going forward, and no vote means it's not. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Jen, you've got that?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. And then, just as a follow-on, Mr. Bowman, we'll talk more about, I ask you to start following up with the Board of Ed to see what the options are at Tomlinson, and also just check whatever criteria there are on the Z rec to make sure that if we can transfer that to the new project, to make sure that it goes. Folks, gentlemen from Green Skies, thank you very much for your work and effort on this, and we look forward to an opportunity of working with you in the future.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Back to the agenda. If I could ask you, since we're going to continue the meeting, if I could ask you, as you leave, to do your talking outside in the hall, that would be greatly appreciated. Continuing on to the meeting. Item number five, it's a resignation for information only from the Fair TV Commission, Alexis P. Harrison, Republican, from 240 Melanie Lane. Her term was 715 to 716. Resignation date was November 16, 2015. Item six, from the Town Clerk, to approve the reappointment of the following sub-registars as recommended by the Town Clerk. Sub-registars Barbara Dugello, Samuel Green, Kevin Lesko, Frank Pope, Richard Miller, Pamela Shaughnessy Banks. May I have a motion to accept? A second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? This is one of those things that happens on a regular basis, just to, it's more administrative than, this is one of those items that happens on an annual basis, it's more administrative than anything else, but we do need to reappoint the sub-registars. Any further discussion from the Board? Any seeing none, any comments from the public? Back to the Board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven. This item is for information only, First Selectman reappointments. To the Conservation Commission, Kevin Gumper, Democrat, 315 Carroll Road, for a term of 1115 to 1120. Elizabeth H. Jones, Republican, 90 Shetland Road, for a term 1115 to 1120. Employees Retirement Board, this does require RTM approval. Brian Veyhe, Republican, 1625 Melville Avenue, for a term 1115 to 1120. And to the Fairfield Housing Authority, Rita Waterman, Democrat, 39 Benson Place, for a term 1115 to 1120. Next up, also for information only, the First Selectman appointments. To the Economic Development Commission, John F. Naro, Democrat, 57 Riverside Drive, for a term 1111 to 1116. This is to fill a vacancy for Chris LaSala, who resigned. Continuing on, Gregory Minsky, this is also to the Economic Development Commission. Gregory Minsky, Democrat, 1012 Mill Plain Road, for a term 1115 to 1120. And this is to fill a vacancy for Abbas Nadem, whose term expired. To the Cable Advisory Council, Area 2, Stuart Stretzler, unaffiliated, from 56 Lamp lighter Lane, term 1115 to 1117. And this is to fill a vacancy created by the passing of Howard Jacobson. And if I can just clarify for my colleagues, there is still, I believe, some conflict in terminology between the ordinance passed by the RTM concerning Fair TV and the bylaws of the CAC, Cable Advisory Commission. At the request of the, our local Fair TV commission, they nominated this one person, so I felt it was okay to go ahead and appoint him. Our ordinance says all five members of our commission are members of the CAC. That conflicts with the CAC bylaws. I believe they are still in the, in the stages of talking that out, to sort that out. However, since the Fair TV commission asked for this appointment to make sure they were represented, it seemed appropriate to go ahead and do that. I just want, just again, want you all clear that we haven't resolved it, we, this is, if you will, a Band-Aid at their request. And then the Employees Retirement Board, which also requires RTM approval, Scott Pollack, unaffiliated, from 543 Wormwood Road, for a term 1111 to 1116. And this is to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Robert Malarki. Next up, appointments. Since these are two different boards, we could either do them together or ask that we take them one at a time. Do we have a preference?
We'll split on.
To here consider and act upon the following appointments. For the Board of Finance, Kevin L. Hopkins, Democrat, 76 Bennett Street, term 1115 to 1121, to fill a vacancy for Kevin Lennon, who was elected but refused to seat. May I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion.
A second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion here?
I'd just like to talk about, there's been a longstanding agreement between parties in town, when someone who runs for office doesn't fill or can't fulfill their, their term, for whatever reason it be, that the party picks the person they feel would represent them best. And I'd like to continue that tradition here on the Board of Selectmen. So, with that, I've seconded Kevin Hopkins today.
Very good. Any further comment?
Yep.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the Board. I think that Kevin Hopkins did run for the seat, has served on the RTM, has contributed to our town in a great many ways, and I think he'll do a great job on the Board of Finance, and I'm thrilled that he was considered putting his name in for that. So, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations, Kevin. You can check with the Town Clerk or Jen on getting sworn in. Ah, okay. We aim to please. Thank you. Next up, to here consider and act upon the following appointment. For the Police Commission, John Stone Jr., Republican, 195 Carroll Road, for a term of 1115 to 1120, and this is to fill a vacancy for Don Kleber, whose term expired. Is Mr. Stone here? There he is. All right, any comments? May I have a motion to accept? A second?
A second.
Any comments from the Board?
I'm excited that Jack Stone is going to be joining the Police Commission. He likes to be called Jack, not John. I'm excited to have his input in addition to the Police Commission, so, welcome.
Okay. Lori?
Nothing to add.
The, I've actually known Mr. Stone for quite a few years, going all the way back to when I coached his son at Little High School, who was an outstanding quarterback, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
And I know Jack has been interested in public safety for a long time, extending back to his time as State Rep., when I believe he was on the Public Safety Commission up at the State Legislature. So, I think this continues his tradition of being interested in public safety, so I want to thank him for his interest and commitment to the town to continue volunteering. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the Board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Jack. Next up, item 10, Fairfield Woods Middle School Building Committee, to here consider and act upon a request from the Fairfield Woods Building Committee to disband. Just to clarify that, as part of our formal process with building committees- Just to clarify that, as part of our formal process with building committees, when the project is done, and Sal, I believe, once the audit is done?
No.
No, the audit isn't done yet. The building committee has to formally come back to the Board of Ed to accept the project and to the Board of Selectmen, since the building committee's actually worked for the Board of Selectmen to request their disbandment. Sal, if you could take us through that.
Good evening, everybody. Sal Worevivo, major of construction, security, and safety for Board of Ed. I'm here on Vice Chairman Ben Melly's request to take care of this meeting. Fairfield Woods was administered by Fairfield Wood Building Committee. We're very pleased with the work that they did for the Board of Ed. I'm very pleased with the facility. It's been a couple of years since we've been done, and all the paperwork that needs to be turned in has been turned in. The building committee had solicited the approval and acceptance of the facility and their project by the Board of Ed, which was done many months ago. And this is the last item. They are relieved... They have no more work to do, and they request that they be relieved of their duty for this project. And that's long and short of it.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just a comment. I taught at Fairfield Woods, so it's a completely different building than it was 17 years ago when I last taught there. I think it looks great, and it's nice to see it come to a conclusion. I just had one question.
Sure.
And we could kind of talk about it afterwards, but I heard from a few people there, and this was last year, there were some issues with the heating system, like not being controlled onsite but being controlled offsite, and that rooms were too hot, too cold. I was just curious if that was being addressed.
Temperature complaints are always the greased pig trying to get a hold of it. There's a building automation system that manages the building. It is... Can be managed from offsite or onsite.
Okay.
I'm not aware of the particular situation you're talking about, but...
It just seemed extreme when we're talking about trying to conserve energy and stuff when people have to open windows because it's too high in the winter.
Right. We tried to moderate it, but there are over 1,500 employees, so we have 1,500 determinations of what is comfortable. So somebody's bound to be uncomfortable at the same setting that is comfortable for the majority of the people. That being said, we do address those issues. They unfortunately come all the time, and we have the maintenance department that works on that. The particular situation, I'm not aware of. We could talk offline about it.
Okay.
To see if it's something that's ongoing, be glad to help you with that.
Great.
Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Jen, did we get a motion on this? All right. Then if I might, let's get the motion before us. To here consider and act upon a request from the Fairfield Woods Building Committee. May I have a motion to accept? A second?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sal, thank you.
Thank you.
Please convey our best to the committee.
Thank you.
Item 11, from the Director of Information Technology. To here consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Information Technology. Resolve that Michael C. Tetro, first selectman of the Town of Fairfield, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the Town of Fairfield, a network access service agreement for the State of Connecticut's Department of Administrative Services and Commission for Education and Technology to join the network services program offered through the Commission for the purpose of connecting to the State of Connecticut's Nutmeg Network. Further resolve that Michael C. Tetro, first selectman of the Town of Fairfield, is authorized to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the Town of Fairfield, an agreement with the State of Connecticut's Office of Policy and Management for a $42,400 grant to cover the cost of connecting the Fairfield Woods Branch Library to the Nutmeg Network. May I have a motion to accept? A second?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Swift, do you want to take us through this?
Do you have the copies?
I've got it. Yep, thank you.
The Nutmeg Network is a statewide fiber optic network that connects municipalities to the Internet for a low cost and a high speed. It also gives public schools and libraries free access to the Internet. The town did apply for the grant and was awarded that grant to connect to the network. There are three reasons we should connect to the network. One is that we will reduce our costs. We will also have a faster Internet connection, so better service, and we will also be able to have redundancy for the police and fire departments. The town should save in the first year over $17,000, and depending on the usage in the first year, the cost might go up a little bit for the network, but we'll still save at least $13,000, if not more, in subsequent years. That's the basics.
Any questions from the board? Can you explain just a little bit? We're going to be replacing one of the network connections we now have.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We're going to retain one of the two network connections, and then down the road, this builds a platform for future expansion. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Certainly. Right now, we have an Internet connection here at Town Hall and one at the Fairfield Woods Branch Library. The connection here at Town Hall will remain, but the one at the Branch Library will go away because we'll have this connection in that building. So that'll save us the money right there because we're spending about $21,000 a year on that connection at the branch alone right now. And when we have this extra connection, the town will also be connected because we have a fiber optic network in town. So that will get Town Hall traffic up to the Branch Library and then out to the Internet to that access, as well as the connection in this building. So there'll be redundancy in case of a failure on either site, they'll still have an Internet connection. Right now, the police and fire departments, excuse me, use that connection as well, including the cars and trucks that drive around the town to help us. And if they lose that connection, they lose connectivity back to their headquarters, so they would have problems getting to places and using the technology that they've learned to rely on over the past several years.
Okay. And from an overall standpoint, what does this do for our capacity?
Right now, we're getting 20 megabits per second at each location. This would give us up to a gigabit, which is...
Thousand.
Yeah. No, but let's try and remember the numbers.
Five hundred.
Yes, thank you. 500 times what we have now. So it's substantial. And the cost is still going to be much less than we would pay now through anybody else.
I see other towns are doing this. It looks like this is where municipal governments are going. I think it is a cost saver. So I support it.
Laura, any comments before we go to the public?
No, I'm going with that.
Okay. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Any further discussion before we vote?
Nope.
Chris?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Swift, thank you very much. All right. Next up, item 12, from the Director of Public Works. To here consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Whereas pursuant to CGS Section 4-66G, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the Town of Fairfield take an application to the state for $500,000 in order to undertake improvements to the historic Burr Mansion and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by CGS Section 4-66G. And further resolve that the filing of an application for the state financial assistance by the Town of Fairfield in an amount not to exceed $500,000 is hereby approved. And further resolve that First Selectman Mike Tetro is directed to execute and file said application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such an additional information to execute such other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered. To execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Fairfield. May I have a motion to accept? All right. A second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mike, who's going to take us through this? Thank you, Joe.
Joseph Michelangelo, Director of Public Works, and Mike Jaylee from the Fairfield Museum is also here, who manages this as one of the historic properties on the Town Green complex. In November of last year, the Town of Fairfield applied for three steep grants. This was one of them that we received. It was 2015 steep grant. We applied the earliest possible date. We got three of them in the queue. The steep grants are awarded in a rolling basis. We were waiting, 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 and finally, near the end of the year, October 6, we got the award letter, and we received a $500,000 grant to do improvements at the Burr Mansion. The other two were unsuccessful. We were fortunate to receive that. Just to be clear, there's two resolutions before you, this one and the next one, but it's just... There's one $500,000 grant, and we're working with Mike Jaylee to come up with the design of the remodel of the inside of the building. Previously, and Mike could get into more details on how we are progressing with that and some of the ideas how this $500,000 be utilized. Previously, this... One of the... I think one of the reasons we're successful in this is that the... We're gaining momentum with the Burr Mansion. Last year, the town approved $150,000 to invest in the Burr Mansion, and we're proceeding with a lot of that work as we speak. We did an environmental study. We're doing environmental remediation. We're upgrading the electrical, upgrading the plumbing, and starting the architectural services for the remodeling of the... Basically, a lot of the inside portion of it, which will be done by this $500,000 grant.
All right. And the 150 that you talked about, those were some very important and critical infrastructure items, from plumbing to electrical, that really were needed immediately, and those were done as part of a non-recurring project last year that was approved by the boards, including the RTM, right?
Correct. So I think we got approved for that probably in the February, March timeframe, and we're right to work on a lot of that stuff.
Okay. Anything further?
Unless Mike wants to go.
Is Mr. Jaylee going to give us an update on anything?
I'd be too, if you'd like. Good evening, everybody. Mike Jaylee, Director of the Fairfield Museum. As you know, the Fairfield Museum has a management agreement with the town to assist in guiding the proper historic preservation and public use of the town-owned historic properties, Burr Mansion being one of them. Burr Mansion being very actively used by the community since, really, 1979, 1980. Over that time, the mansion is very heavily used, not only by community nonprofits like Christmas Tree Festival, Fairfield Junior Women's Club, and others, but also as an event rental facility. A lot of people have been married there. There has not been significant capital investment in that property, really, in those many, many years. We have systems that are breaking down, systems that are no longer up to code, and so, thanks to the town's very generous allocation of $150,000 in this steep grant, we are beginning Phase One of a multi-phase effort to bring all those systems up to snuff this winter. We are going out to bed very soon to do renovations to the bathrooms, make them handicapped accessible, to increase the number of them, to make new kitchen space, which is safer and more appropriate to the events that happen there, to upgrade the entire electrical system and the plumbing, which we had problems with last year, and to really try to bring the facility up to a proper rental facility. There will be probably future work to be done once we get through this first phase, and we look forward to coming back to this board and the RTM to kind of report on what still needs to be done.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yes. What were the other two steep grants which haven't been approved yet?
Well, they haven't been approved, and I don't think they're going to get them either. And once again, we privately... We strategized about our applications, and the other one was for an improvement at Owen Fish Park. And we thought that was a good candidate because not only is it a recreational park, it has baseball fields, tennis courts, playscapes, a VFW American Leech, and a pond for environmental things. So we thought that was a great project that hit on a lot of different aspects. So we submitted that, and I thought we had a good application, but once again, they're very competitive. And the other was for downtown drainage improvements in the immediate area of the Post Road, Sanford Street. That's where we have the biggest peak flash floods. So one of the ideas that we've had is... One of the issues with downtown is there's very little impervious area. So one of our projects was to not only improve the drainage, but to use Sherman Green as a place to store and infiltrate and get the water there. So once again, we thought that had a lot of benefits, environmental benefits, flooding benefits, the downtown area being a vibrant area. So we thought they were both good candidates. Mark Barnhart was the one that rode up all three of them. And, you know, Mark knows how to hit all the points, but, as I said, they were successful and were, you know... The 500... Actually, $500,000 is the maximum you could get for any community. So we were fortunate... So we got the maximum for this year, and this happened to be the project that hit the most points with the State of Connecticut. OPM is the awarding agency.
Did you request $500,000?
Well, we requested 500 for this one. I believe the other ones were 250 and 250. So in total, we requested a million altogether. So we requested more than...
We could have gotten.
More than we could have gotten, so.
All right. Any further questions from the board?
When do you make your decisions on what steep grants you're going to put in for next year?
Well, one of the things, you know, the announcement has come out just this month. Bill Hurley of my office was on a webinar, I think, this week on it. And one of the things we generally do is, you know, Mr. Tetro convenes a lot of department heads, and we... Once again, it's a town decision, it isn't my decision, a Mark Barnhart's decision. We probably have five or six department heads who meet and, you know, flush out projects. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Mr. Elway?
Want to speak from here?
No?
No.
If you speak from there, your voice is not captured for the viewers at home.
Oh, okay. It's just a question, actually.
Steve, we have comments, not questions.
Oh, right. Comment is, the Historics District Commission, would they have...
Any exterior changes to the Burr Mansion will also have to be approved by the Historic District Commission, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments from the board?
I just actually had one question.
Go ahead.
It just said one of part of it here was cognizant of conditions and prerequisites before this. Any specific important things, unusual things? Because I did not read that general stat.
Yeah, there's... You know, there's... In any OPM grant, there's probably a 50-page book of all the different targets you have to hit.
Okay.
And one of the things, because this is a historic building, there's an office in Hartford Ship-O, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, which is one additional hurdle that this steep grant has, just because...
So it met all of those criteria?
Well, correct. Well, there's quite a bit of... No, those are, you know, when we...
When we do it, there are things we have to worry about.
Correct, that's it.
That's it, okay.
So there's a lot of points we have to hit on any steep grant. One more issue because of the nature of the property on this one.
So there's somebody who makes sure we're doing all of that?
Correct. And once again, you know, the... Myself and Michael handle a lot of the construction stuff. Will handle a lot of that, making sure we hit the points, but once again, Mark Barnhart. It's not dissimilar from our Community Development Block Grant project. So it's... They... You know, I don't think there's any differences with that. And our architect on the project, David Scott Parker, has been meeting with Ship-O the last several weeks just to make sure that everything he puts pencil on paper meets their requirement.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Are we ready to vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Next item up is item 13, and this is from the Director of Public Works, and this does require Board of Finance and RTM approval. To here consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Resolve that the First Selectman is hereby authorized on behalf of the Town of Fairfield to expend up to $500,000 to fund a small-town economic assistance project entitled improvements to historic Burr Mansion. 100% of said project cost to be reimbursed by the Town Small-Town Economic Assistance Project Grant. May I have a motion to accept?
Yes.
A second?
Second.
And just to clarify, the last one was really confirming we finished all the paperwork on the application to accept the money. This one is focused on being able to expend or have the authorization to spend the money. We need both... This one has to go to the RTM. The authorization to apply for the money doesn't have to go to the RTM. The authorization to apply for the money doesn't have to go to the RTM. So it's broken out in two, so we just send the one to the RTM that deals with spending the money. All right. Do we need any further discussion on this? Would you like any further questions for the presenters? All right. Any comments from the public on this? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Item 14, we had done. Next up, from the First Selectman, the Board of Selectmen meeting dates for calendar year 2016. We're not necessarily voting on those, and we can change those or modify those as we need to during the year.
Yep.
But for right now, any concerns or questions on those?
No, they look fine.
Okay.
I'd like to highlight September 7th is my birthday.
All right. So you want an...
So you want cake?
You want an extra big agenda?
I'd like to highlight that.
All right. Very cool. All right. The, going on, item 16, these are the budget meetings for calendar year 2016. A number of these are joint hearings with the Board of Finance. I'm sure you've seen that process go through before. I'd ask you to look at those very quickly. They were approved by the Board of Finance last night, so let's, to the extent that we can make ourselves available, that would be great. And then, what's also important from our board standpoint is the item B. March 28th and 29th, one's a Monday and one's a Tuesday. Typically, we allow Monday to get together to have a discussion about the budget issues. At that point, we finished all the joint hearings, and we've also had the public session, that Saturday morning session, part of that. Then on Tuesday, we'd actually come back with a vote. So on Monday, we'd identify what changes, that type of thing we might be looking at. On Tuesday, come back for the vote.
I don't see the Saturday date listed on here, and that's Easter weekend.
The Saturday date is just a Board of Finance meeting? It is not a Board of Selectmen meeting?
Okay.
But Jen, could you check that out? So technically, that's...
You did, and it's not over Easter.
The weekend before.
But I didn't have to email you that list.
When is Easter this weekend?
I think the 20th, the 28th is the Monday after Easter, so 27?
I'm going to say the 19th.
That would make, that would make sense, because the other one's the 21st.
I'm happy to email that to everybody tomorrow.
Yeah, that's not a required attendance thing for here. The Board of Finance does schedule that.
Yep. Okay.
And I thought when they said that, they said they checked all the holiday stuff.
If it's the 19th, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
But thank you for bringing that up. All right. And again, that's not something we need to vote on, and again, if there is something like an amazing birthday party that you need to break for, we can, because it's just the three of us.
Right.
We can get, as we did in the first meeting, we can get together and move it a week, move it a couple of days, whatever makes sense in that regard. Next item up is the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
Would I like to make a motion?
A second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any amendments?
I'd like to amend the amount this week to $15,209.97.
All right. Is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment?
No.
All in favor?
Mr. Chair, technically, the language is to delete the period at the end of the sentence of the resolution, add a comma, and a amount. I know it's very technical, but that's the amendment that we do.
Mr. Timmy, would you mind revising your motion?
I would be happy to. I'd like to make a motion or amendment to change the amount to $15,209.97. Remove the pyramid, a period, replace it with a comma.
All right. Laurie, is that okay with your second?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right. So the item, that amends before us. All in favor of the amendment?[1707.16]